We'll call this meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Sure. Trustee Anson?
Here.
Trustee Durrell?
Here.
Trustee Myers?
Here.
President Fannerstorf?
Here.
Trustee Walsh-Lager?
Here.
Trustee Lutzke?
Here.
And Trustee Connor?
Here. If you'd all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Trustee Myers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, if there are any, anybody that wants to speak, this is our time for public comments for items that are not on the agenda. You can come forward at this time.
I tell you my name because you don't know why I have to say it.
Please do.
Yeah, I'll keep it up like it should be. I'm Dick Landwerth, 251 Middle Lane, and I just want to, I, there's no words that I can express on the, on the couple of weeks that I've had better than all the years I spent on the board. But I just wanted to thank you, Mr. President, and the Board, and I want to thank all of the citizens of Heartland, really, that made this happen to me. And then all the hard work that the upstairs did and the fire department and the police department and the DPW. So that's all I want to do is say, thanks, Emile. There's no words that I can express. Like, people turn around and they say, well, have you lived in Heartland all your life? And I says, no, not yet. I'll see y'all. Have a good, keep the village going.
Thank you for everything, Dick.
Thank you.
For anybody in the village that doesn't know, that was a gentleman that the village, or that the municipal building was just named after just these past weeks, and who served on the Board for 54 years. Chief, do you have comments, or are you just?
No, I'm just getting ready for the next agenda.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, okay. So now we have our presentation related to armored rescue vehicles by suburban critical incident team. I just didn't know if you had comments before that item, so.
All right, I'm gonna ask Lieutenant Jason Pfeiffer to join me up at the podium. I asked Lieutenant Pfeiffer to join me. He's our commander of our suburban critical incident team. As a reminder, our critical incident team is made up of nine different municipalities throughout the county. I kind of call it like a horseshoe. It goes through Lake Country to our eastern border of the county, and then wraps back around the southern portion all the way around to Maguannago. Again, nine different communities. I had previously sent out a memo to the Board in regards to the SCIT, or Suburban Critical Incident Team, procuring a armored rescue vehicle. This is kind of just piggybacking on that formal presentation to give you some knowledge of what we're actually trying to obtain here as a resource for our critical incident team or SWAT team. I'll let Lieutenant Pfeiffer go through. I'll interject some things and kind of let you guys know where the SCIT Board is looking to go and where each of the nine communities are in this project. And with that, I'll introduce Lieutenant Pfeiffer.
Thank you all for having me tonight and getting me on the agenda. I greatly appreciate it. As Chief Misko indicated, I'm, Jason Pfeiffer worked for the Brookfield PD, I'm in my 24th year there. Put together this PowerPoint to identify a mission-critical need that we've kind of come to with the realities of law enforcement today. Right now, we're currently at 36 tactical operators, 16 negotiators, and we're serving a population of 140,000 in the nine communities that we serve. We start looking at the population bases of these communities, and we quickly realize that we'd be the third-largest city in the state of Wisconsin, population-wise. And we're pretty, we're pretty busy covering these responsibilities through all those nine jurisdictions. These rescue vehicles get a bad rap. In the right, top-right corner is an M1 Abrams tank. We're not looking to purchase anything that has a gun mounted on it at all. That's not the purpose of this. The way I explained it to my chief is that it's an armored ambulance. That is, it will stop bullets from coming into it. Some of the options that are available to various municipalities in the city of Waukesha, they actually have a vehicle that was a military vehicle that they painted, converted, and have very successfully used, as recently on Highway 67 in Tactical Incidents. There are some issues with these vehicles, though. They have a very wide turn radius. They are military vehicles. They're expensive to maintain, and it takes a crew of three just to turn it and operate it. It also takes a lot of time to get that started, especially in a Wisconsin winter and out to your scene. The vehicle that we've identified that is most appropriate, and I think fits most of our communities the best, especially Heartland and the, and the Lake Country area, is the one in the middle there. And it's between a Ford Raptor and a Ford F-350. It sits on a Ford F-550 chassis, and it's made in Canada. The vehicle's capabilities, it stops bullets, it even stops grenades. Sadly, in law enforcement, there have been many incidents where rescue vehicles have been shot up multiple times, and we have officers that are able to walk out of those safely and go home. They're also four-by-four capable, which is, again, very critical in Wisconsin winters, to be able to get to areas, backyards, where we might need to rescue people from an area or a hot zone. Some of the incidents that we've been part of, where we've had response time issues, New Berlin 2018, waiting 45 minutes for a rescue vehicle from Waukesha, New Berlin 2017, Brookfield 2015, a neighbor was shot. As a result of that incident, two people had to carry an injured man nearly 300 yards to safety, or a rescue vehicle could have pulled up in the backyard and got him out of there, right to a paramedic, minimizing that patient casualty time. I responded to the Azana active shooter scene, and that was an incident where it was all rescue vehicles on hand, as many as we could get, as quickly as we can get them. It would be nice to have the resource in the nine communities served by SCIT. Little bit more details here, again, we bring this vehicle in. I don't have to have officers in harm's way. They can get that person in the back of the rescue vehicle, get them out of there. This is the actual overview of the New Berlin incident, the tan rooftop. One of our snipers and one of our K-9 officers were shot at several times by an individual in that residence. And how we place these vehicles with modern tactics is we put one in front, one in the rear, and the third vehicle is actually gonna bring in additional personnel, switch out personnel, bring in additional equipment, and it's available should somebody be injured. If we have someone get injured, the two that are on the house are gonna leave with that casualty, and then we need the third to come in to maintain our containment. In the past, when Chief Misko and I started our tactical careers, the standoff distances were very significant. We had to use the corners of the neighbors' houses, as indicated in the photo on the left. That would be the containment zone. With the modern application of tactical rescue vehicles, we can shrink that danger zone, get resources close, monitor people through ballistic glass, and ensure that we have guaranteed containment of not just the suspect from fleeing, but from vehicles actually coming out of the garage. The first thing we'll do is we'll block a garage door with it. So, and then the neighbors that are around that smaller red circle, we can effectively evacuate with that third vehicle. So, the vehicle that we would like to purchase would be a regional asset with a lot of help that we've been asking for our neighbors for many years. As I continue here, if I'm talking too fast, let me know. Jump in if you have questions. It's designed to be interactive. I'm just trying to make this quick so I'm not taking up your night. More examples of where these rescue vehicles are being used. This is Marathon County. I had an opportunity to meet this tactical commander this April, and they told the story of how they lost an officer and where three civilians were killed. That vehicle and the Oneida County Sheriff's vehicle ended that situation by actually pushing in the wall where the suspect was shooting at officers, stopping the situation. They're not tanks, but they have the capabilities to push stuff and pull stuff, and that can be helpful. Fond du Lac, Wisconsin, when Craig Burkholz was killed, that's a civilian being placed in the back of a similar type of rescue vehicle variant, getting them out of that danger zone, taking them to safety away from where gunfire unfortunately more and more frequently is occurring.
And this is where they were being shot at, from an elevated position, from a house, second-story house window. They were able to affect that rescue. Otherwise, they would have been pinned down.
Yeah, Ford hasn't quite come up with ballistic glass for its squad cars yet, so, and I don't think that's gonna happen. It's, it's just a ways out. Last year, in 2018, according to the FBI, there were 27 active shooter events. We did have one in the state of Wisconsin, unfortunately, again. We've had previous incidents in the state of Wisconsin. These are another heavy rescue vehicle use incident. So, after we had the Sheridan, I thought, oh, we're good, we had ours. And then we had another one. I'm not keeping my head in my sand for the third one. So, this is about future preparedness. These are 20-year vehicles, and I think it maximizes safety for all concerned. We also have the ability to de-escalate incidents from a position of safety. We can talk more, because these, these, these vehicles can stop rounds, precluding us from having to shoot people quicker, and that's huge. Talking about minimizing the life lost, suspects and officers. These can get into natural disaster areas. They have run-flat tires, so if you have a tornado come through your community or some type of natural disaster, they're gonna be able to go places that a patrol car cannot due to the height clearance and the off-road capabilities. They're also good for high-water rescue. This is a rescue vehicle in Green Bay this spring in March. I happened to be up there for a school that week when the Brown County Sheriff walked into the classroom and said, everybody out, the parking lot's flooded. And they asked somebody, one of the SWAT members in the class, to go get their vehicle. They were, they were driving down residential roads, backing up the houses where ambulance couldn't go because of their low clearance, pulling people out of homes. Snow, mud, we've got it all covered with this vehicle. This vehicle can drive in up to four feet of water, which is pretty impressive due to its weight clearance and how its exhaust manifold works. We look at the history of rescue vehicles, or actually before they were really prevalent. This is an ambulance which does not stop bullets and carries huge oxygen tanks backed up to Columbine High School. And I, I don't know if anybody remembers the video footage from that day, but they were using fire company engines and ambulances as cover to get to the rescued, and that's just not modern tactics anymore. We gotta progress past that. Stuck fire ambulance there. Ambulances get shot at, especially in the city of Milwaukee. It's not uncommon. This is a headline from the Journal Sentinel from 2015. They're really not discriminating between EMS and police anymore. Unfortunately, we're dealing with this. Patient evacuation, minimizing wait time. My plan is to put an EMT, Tactical Emergency Medical Services, trained paramedic in the back of that vehicle on all incidents. So we're minimizing the wait time to get someone in, in touch with that casualty and get them out of the hot zone. Plenty of room in the back of those for treating people. We can get our K-9 assets in there, get our resources close to the problem. Numbers. Figure $1,000 per year to ensure, that would come out of my budget that I'm responsible for. It's a 20-year vehicle. It's gonna be stored in a heated garage 24/7/365, except when it's out for training and deployments. And it would be stored at the New Berlin PD, which would have 24/7 access with trained operators. They have the most operators on our team, and we feel that that would probably be the best way to have it available to all nine communities in the quickest way possible. So, how do we finance this thing? Well, the nice thing about the suburban critical incident team is there are nine member agencies. That diminishes that dollar amount. We're looking at approximately a little less than a $300,000 vehicle. We divide that by nine agencies. We're looking at around $34,000. Village manager David DeAngelis is very, very kind to take on the responsibility of taking care of the legal portion of this, along with Jenna Merton from the city of Brookfield. She's our municipal city attorney. They're gonna put together the memorandum of understanding. When governments get together and share money, state law follows that. Procedures need to be followed. Memorandums need to be signed by, by each member jurisdiction, ensuring that everybody's up above board with where this money is, where it's going, how it's being distributing, who's managing it. Mr. DeAngelis has been that individual, and him and Jenna Merton will be point of contact for that. David's email is there, and I've talked to Chief Misko. If he has any questions, we can get that information relayed to Mr. DeAngelis to make it very transparent. Thirty-seven calls, well, we've had 115 calls when I made this PowerPoint. Thirty-seven of those required a rescue vehicle, where we were facing a weapons threat, executing high research warrants. Twenty-nine represents the number of deployments that, that would go out just in training for the 2019 calendar year. So it's going out 29 times just this year for training days. So we want our people operating our rescue vehicle, because when it comes time for a critical incident, we don't want to have to meet the driver, figure out what they got in somebody else's vehicle, and then formulate plans. We want to have that pre-arranged, predetermined with our personnel. All right, rescue vehicles. We look at a ladder truck for a fire department. We look at a rescue vehicle that stops bullets. The bottom left is about 1 point, 1 million to 1.1 million, and that might be the responsibility of a single municipality. We're looking at spreading a $300,000 resource over nine jurisdictions, which I think is, is reasonable from the perspective of the taxpayer, which we have to be very cognizant of. Yes?
Where is the nearest armored rescue vehicle at this point in time? Where's the nearest one?
That's sitting at the Waukesha County Sheriff's Department Highway Department.
And they have one?
They have one.
And after that?
City of Waukesha, the, one of the first slides we had. And that's kept at a fire station on the, I believe, the near south side of the city of Waukesha.
And that one, and I've been in it? It's, it's a beast. It's hard to get in, it's hard to get out, it's not quick. Like you said, the turning radius is ridiculous. It's really not.
The, the.
It's not practical.
The Waukesha County Sheriff's Department has something comparable to what we're asking for. It's a different type of vehicle, but very comparable. But the one in the city of Waukesha was actually a demilitarized vehicle, so it was made for overseas operations. It's a mine-resistant type vehicle. We're not looking for that here in the state of Wisconsin. It doesn't really fit our, it's better than having nothing, but it doesn't really fit what our main mission is. For using that piece of equipment for cover, the ground clearance is so high, it's not a good piece of cover because you can't really get behind it because it's taller than you are, and the, the ground clearance is so much higher. The other issue is, it's hard to get into. You take tactical operators with all their equipment, which is quite a bit of weight, and now you try to affect a rescue, you're typically taking someone that can't walk on their own and trying now to get them in a vehicle that's hard to get into by yourself, let alone actually carrying someone, where these are a little, these are made for what we're trying to do with them as that medical rescue armored vehicle.
And in speaking with the city of Waukesha, we have a great working relationship with them. You know, they, they admitted they would like to have a law enforcement-created vehicle for this purpose. It just, it wasn't financially feasible for one jurisdiction to do it. That's why we start looking at the, the unique set of circumstances this nine-agency jurisdiction had, team has, and it kind of puts us in a better position financially.
Could you repeat the nine agencies again?
Sure. It's Maguannago, the city of Muskego, New Berlin, Brookfield, Elm Grove, Village of Pewaki, Sheneka, Heartland, Delafield. I think we're all there. That's our nine.
And what's the response time from New Berlin's?
We can be anywhere to our coverage areas with license and sirens in 20 minutes from New Berlin PD.
And for those of you who aren't aware, that's where we would anticipate housing it. For, again, that horseshoe, I kind of explained, where Lake Country down to the eastern border, down to the southern border of the county. Where New Berlin's located, one, they have a garage that they can house it, which is nice for a piece of equipment that we're looking to keep for over 20 years. But then, two, they have quick freeway access to the south, to the north, and then the whole, obviously, eastern border of the county. So we felt that was one of the quickest response times, that middle agency that could be to any one of the nine participating agencies, the quickest.
Yeah, and the reality of this is, though, when we get these incidents, I'm not just gonna be requesting ours. I'm gonna be asking for Waukesha Counties, city of Waukesha's as well, because I need three. To do it safely, the modern protocol, you know, we've been talking about this piece of equipment for several years in the team, probably 10 years, but it was a financial issue. We pride ourselves in going to outside training at the national level with the National Tactical Officers Association. When you keep going to courses and they're saying, you need the rescue vehicle to do the tactic safely, and that, we've been getting that about five years in a row now from the NTOA. It's my job to come back to my, my nine bosses and not say that we need to have it, but explain the modern tactic. It's, it's the Policy Board's decision and, and effectively each individual jurisdiction's financial decision to do this. We're simply trying to inform the Policy Board on what the modern resolution of these tactics are from the safest possible perspective. We start looking at an officer death, the costs associated with that to a, to a village, a city. It's astronomical. It gets very expensive very quickly. We don't want that to happen to suspects, to officers, certainly not to civilians. And these vehicles, they're tested and true. There's countless stories on, on several of the manufacturers' websites scrolling these incidents, unfortunately, and it's just modern times. You know, when we started SWAT many years ago, we didn't wear the heavy vests. We just wore our soft-body armor and threw something over it, and we jumped out of a van and did it. Times have changed, and pride for the best. It, it needs to be safer. All right, quick summary here. With respect to, to this vehicle, we do need to catch up. We currently don't have one. To field a SWAT team or a tactical team, you're really not standalone unless you have it. Time, I want to get it to the affected community as quickly as possible, and this is gonna result in... We talked about training it. I want to train in it. I want our people operating it, staffed with our equipment that we're familiar with, instead of trying to figure that out at 3:00 in the morning in January when someone ripped off some rounds and we have to now solve this problem. Talked about how ambulances are not bulletproof or four-by-four, and squad cars are not going in there. I've been to an officer-involved shooting scene, and I was amazed that there's a parking lot full of red fire truck stuff. None of it's ballistic. It's only gonna be the officers in there. These rescue vehicles can go anywhere. They get in and they can get people that are injured out and get them to definitive medical care, which is critical for survival. Multiple vehicles are needed. We'll need to get our neighbors' vehicles, as I discussed, and we would like to become a resource to our community partners that have been so good to us for so many years. That 37 requests, that's most of the Waukesha County Sheriff's Rescue Vehicle. We'd like to reciprocate that and make all of our scenes safer. That's my contact information. If anybody has any questions and if something comes to you in a day or two, please don't hesitate to contact myself or Chief Misko. There's been a couple of articles in local papers. You can Google that, but it's really the same that I'm, I've been presenting at all, the villages and cities throughout our nine jurisdictions.
How is it being received by the other municipalities that you've been talking to?
Outstanding support. We've been very pleased, and everyone that I've had the presentation, they haven't had an issue. Some of them had wanted some follow-up questions, and some of them wanted some time to let it soak in, but we've been very fortunate with the support from the communities that we presented to.
So a couple of things for clarification, just to make sure we're all on the same page with, with our, with the request of SCIT. It says we don't need one, we need three. The SCIT's requesting one, so one vehicle would be $300,000-ish. The manufacturer that we're going from is Terradyne. It's similar to what the Waukesha County Sheriff's Department has, which is Alanco. That's what the Milwaukee Police Department uses. It's just got some better armored capabilities with the Terradyne. It's above and beyond what the Alanco is able to offer, and the pricing's.
Price point's a little lower.
A little lower with the Terradyne, so we're a little better off even that way with better armor capabilities. We still will be calling Waukesha Sheriff and the Milwaukee Police Department, because for majority of these incidents, whether it's a house, depending on the layout, you're typically gonna need three of these vehicles to do a safe containment and shrink that containment zone, so now you don't have neighbors or neighbors' houses involved with that containment zone. Obviously, vehicles, if you don't have at least two, the vehicle can always go mobile because you gotta be able to box that vehicle in, otherwise you could always go forward or back. Where that's recently come into play, as I know all of you are aware of, the Highway 67 incident, there were.
Five?
Five armored vehicles out there. It was in the worst possible spot, talk about on a open highway on I-94, where there was no safe approach to get to this vehicle whatsoever. In a lot of open area where an armed individual starts shooting rounds, there could have been a lot of casualties. So for us to be able to get into that incident as safe as we were, ultimately, that individual was shot upon and was struck. He is alive still, but even with armored vehicles, it still was that dangerous of a situation, hostage rescue-type situation. Also recently, in Sacramento, California, this literally just came out a couple weeks ago, a brand-new officer just was shot and killed, and she laid dead while the gunman had him pinned down from a position of advantage and continued to fire upon responding officers. She laid there dying for 45 minutes until they could finally get a piece of armor there to effect a rescue, and by that point, she had already died. So again, there's a lot of value to these. All of the tactical associations, both nationally and locally here in Wisconsin, these have been integrated into the tactics of these critical incident teams, where it's not like nice to have, it's tactics are built around the safety that these armored rescue vehicles do provide. So it's one of those, for us to be current with what tactics are being taught, this is the type of equipment that we would need available to us. It's not something we're gonna use every day, but I will tell you, we will use it frequently enough, and when we need it, it's really something that you need. No different than our ladder trucks and our fire apparatus that we use. You need that stuff when you need it, and it is something that would be imperative for us to have available to us. So even though there are some surrounding pieces of armor, we still would rely on having our own. We had an incident where Lieutenant Pfeiffer showed you in New Berlin. We were literally about to make entry into that residence, and Milwaukee Police Department was assisting us, while they start getting calls about their own critical incident, and they were about to leave ours to go to theirs, when we were about to make entry into a home. And I'll talk about reorganizing and trying to figure out what you're gonna do. Luckily for us, their situation resolved itself, but we were literally within seconds of trying to come up with a whole new game plan on how to affect a rescue.
We've had, we've had a couple incidents where we're asking for support from another agency for the vehicle, and they're like, hey, we got something going on, it's leaving. And that kind of takes the breath out of your tactical progression and can be problematic.
The other piece of the finance that I wanted to mention was, the communities are doing some donation efforts. I know New Berlin's been moving very aggressively in this area with their Citizens Alumni Academy, or Academy Alumni Association. So what's gonna happen is ultimately the donations will come in. I think we have a, a due date of any donations by the end of the year. We're gonna factor whatever money was raised and put that towards the purchase of the vehicle, and then split that nine ways once those donations have been applied to the purchase price. The reason for the loan is some communities aren't willing to just go forward with a $34,000 payment in one year. They were hoping to spread that out into something like $11,000. That would be a worst-case scenario, no donations, $11,000-ish numbers per year, and that's where the low-interest government loan would come in, because for them to start building this, they obviously need some payment.
How soon do you need a decision? I'm guessing you're on some type of timeframe here.
So what I was looking for was some education here. I'm gonna be working with Administrator Bailey, and when it comes to our budget, to start building that in. And obviously, I think that would be a, a step for the village board to show if they support this project or not through the budget process. I don't know if we could do it outside of that, and I'll show, like, if we do that in a maybe next meeting's agenda. What I would like to have is a sense from the Board, do I continue moving full steam ahead on this, or is this something the Board sees some potential pitfalls and issues with? Because that's just a little bit of an issue I'm in, and by the time budget gets going, I'm gonna get kind of put pretty far behind in the year to try to do any type of donation efforts. I know I've talked to the Rotary already. They seem very interested in taking some things on. So, but I've been kind of pausing it all, because I want to make sure the Board is supportive of it before I kind of put the cart before the horse.
Yeah, for it to be on the next agenda, to, you know, to show you actually get that vote of, let's call it, confidence.
Okay.
But I'll... Um, but also if you could, if you're already working with Administrator Bailey, you know, kind of laying those numbers out, it sounds like you guys are pretty close to knowing what's going to be expected from each community. That way we're putting it right in our, you know, that weekly update that goes out so that each of the trustees can see it, but it'll also give enough time if anybody does want to contact you and, uh, you know, have any questions answered, anything a trustee might need so that they can make whatever decision that they, that they need to make.
Absolutely.
And I'll make this available to all the trustees. I'll send that out as long as I can get it out through email if it's not too big. Uh, but again, anytime, call me if you've got questions. I'll definitely be happy to answer those and if I don't know what to answer, you can definitely talk to Lieutenant Pfeiffer and we'll get to the bottom of whatever the question is.
Add something. You know, we, you're looking for $34,000. How much money do we spend on entertainment and art pleasure and sports? We've got a locker room at Arrowhead that costs hundreds of thousands of dollars. We've got, you know, a new baseball stadium in Milwaukee that we paid for with taxes. We've got the new arena downtown that was, you know, millions and millions of dollars. And you guys have to give us a presentation for $34,000? I think that's pretty sad when you ask, when you look at our, our community and, and what we spend on, you know, our entertainment and things that don't help, you know, support saving lives. And $34,000 to help save the life of an officer or anybody else, to me, is a no-brainer.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation.
We'll have it put on the agenda.
Thanks for what you do.
Thank you.
The next item that we have is a consideration of a motion to approve special village board minutes from the June 24th meeting. Also the village board minutes of the June, uh, the June 24th special village board meeting.
Do you want the motion combined?
And the board minutes from the special village board on June 25th. I think that we can take them combined.
Together.
Yeah, that's fine. It's been moved and seconded. If anybody has anything they'd like to add on the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item we have is the consideration of a motion to approve the vouchers for payments. This is in the amount of $435,449.43.
I make a motion to approve the vouchers for $435,449.43. Second.
It has been moved and seconded to pay the vouchers. Any, uh, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Our next items are considerations related to various licenses. Uh, first we have our bartender's operators licenses that expire June 30th, 2020. This is for Amber Davis, Brett Hughes, Laurel Manchester, Evan Anderson.
I make the motion we approve those licenses.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve those operators licenses. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All, all opposed? That motion carries, sorry. Uh, then we have our temporary Class B beer and wine licenses. This is for St. Charles Catholic Parish, 313 Circle Drive. This is for Fall Fest is the event, September 6th, 7th, and 8th.
I make a motion to approve the temporary Class B beer and wine license for St. Charles Catholic Parish.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Next we have temporary operators licenses for Carlton Clarkson, Jill Herkowski, Mercedes Jensen, Beano Bauer, and Brian Kuss.
I'll move the, approve the temporary operators license. Candidates?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Upstee.
And I'm second. And then we have weights and measures license, uh, that, motion carries. Then we have a weights and measures license for Sun Laundry, Bevel's True Value, Wisconsin Cement Company, and Sendix of Heartland LLC. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried.
We, we did not receive anything on the next item.
What?
If you want to table a pedicab.
Oh, that, yeah, no, I just went off the list that we had. So I did, uh, there is an item on the agenda for a organization that we received nothing on, so I think that the board, uh, if they want to vote on it, we can vote to move past it, but there's nothing to take action on. So we'll move to the next.
That wasn't voted on. This hasn't been, he was to come back and give a presentation.
Did he, but he's not here.
Nope. And he didn't provide insurance, anything like that, so.
Right.
We'll give him another opportunity next month.
Okay. Thank you. All right, the next item that we have is a consideration of a motion to adopt a bill for ordinance 610, 2019, and ordinance to repeal and recreate Section 226B pertaining to the village president and village trustees pay schedule. Is it, was it?
That's third reading.
That is the third reading, so at this time it is open to the board taking action on it.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, an ordinance to repeal and recreate Section 2 through 26B pertaining to village president and village trustees pay schedule.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to repeal and recreate that section, 226B. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Next we have discussion, uh, we have a presentation. It says discussion and consideration of a conceptual site plan for development of lands on Campus Drive east of Lake Country Lutheran. I'm just going to add, uh, to, just to clearly explain, this is for presentation. Uh, obviously this is something that we kind of instituted about a year and a half ago where we have, it used to go right to plan commission when someone was going to, you know, propose something in the village. Now, especially when the cameras are rolling and more people are here and also trustees get to know if they should go to the plan commission meetings to pay attention. We have people come and present. It's not intended to be too detailed, but simply to just notify of, uh, you know, what you're thinking of doing and then at that point it affords the board the right to say, yep, go to plan commission or nope, we don't want anything to do with what you're proposing. The floor is yours if you can just identify.
Plenty of future opportunities for feedback.
You can introduce yourself.
Yeah. Good evening. I'm Brian Lindgren with Newman Developments. Uh, it's a pleasure to be back here proposing, uh, a, a new project in the Village of Heartland. This project involves the, uh, the lands currently owned by Lake Country Lutheran across the street on the east side of Campus Drive. It's easy to miss the property as you drive by. It's, it's been wooded, uh, it's got pat trails through it for a long time. However, Lake Country Lutheran has decided they'd like to see something done with it and, um, have approached us as well as a, a partner of, that we've proposed on this project, Catalyst Construction. Uh, so we've worked together to come up with, uh, what you see in front of you is a, a mixed use development. This is something that we've already submitted to the plan commission. We're looking forward to their feedback next week. Uh, it's approximately 53 acres of land that, like I said, is largely wooded natural space right now. Uh, it is in the master plan, uh, comprehensive smart growth plan as institutional today, so we'll have to discuss, uh, what the, uh, the, the village's vision for the property is. It would require a smart growth amendment. It is part of, uh, Sewer PAC, the regional planning commission's, uh, area for proposed growth though and development. Uh, there are trails through it that are used by the community now as the school, uh, as well as the neighbors and, and in our concept, we've proposed to keep those and, and improve those for the, for the municipality to use. Uh, it's, uh, a piece of land that's sandwiched between residential use to the east, uh, the school to the west, and Highway 16 to the south. So that's kind of what has drawn us to the mixed use proposed development where it can provide a, a variety of housing options that we, we feel that the village, uh, uh, needs, uh, that we think there's a strong demand for. That's good in our proposal. We've proposed, uh, single-family condominium style ownership, um, with a, a mixture transitioning as you transition towards the highway of, uh, of multifamily, uh, residential as well as some office and, and commercial space, uh, with potential uses of outreach for the facilities, uh, the school and other facilities nearby, which they've, uh, we're, we're working together with them, uh, as well because there, they do have some proposed uses that they'd like to see there, um, as well as a commercial space, uh, you know, closest to the, the access to Highway 16. So, um, again, uh, we look forward to being, uh, at the plan commission next Monday, uh, taking their feedback and any that you have. It's a great piece of land and, and we look forward to, uh, to providing a development that works well in the Village of Heartland. And I'm happy to answer any initial questions that, while I'm here.
So it's going to be commercial and retail also?
We've proposed that, yes, as part of the conceptual sketch that's, uh, we've done so far.
And then the outreach, two buildings there, so there's three. One, uh, one reach commercial and then, uh, two, uh, outreach officers or?
As of now, yes. Um, we'd work with particularly the outreach and office space. We'd work closely with Lake Country Lutheran and Lake Country, um, High School Society, um, because they're, they've expressed certain, certain needs they could use for, um, again, community outreach, uh, with, not with their students, or not just their students, but and their families, but community members and things that they help run on a regular basis, so. But at the very initial with them, you know, figuring out what they need.
And you were just use condominium again, huh?
Well, I, I guess in our other plan, it's, it's, just to give you a little feedback on that, and, and again, we've, we've had some interactions with, uh, with the community lately that we're not proud of, but we've cleaned up our mess very, very quickly. We can't, the rains this year have been relentless, so. Yeah. The, um, but, uh, yes, as far as the overlooked trails development, um, we've got a waiting list, uh, that surpasses the number of available homes so far of interest, so.
Do you think that these condos, I mean, just, I mean, I know it's just the first paper here, would they be more towards the, I want to say affordable end of things? Not quite as modern?
We, we envision this, yes, as, as a little bit more tailored towards millennials, if you will, first time home buyers, uh, something that is probably more of a two-story style of architecture. Providing a, a housing option that doesn't really exist in the village right now, uh, as far as a new housing option that, uh, that falls somewhere below the, the upper end and, and entry level, which does exist within the village, but it, it's aging. That housing stock is aging, so.
I have a question. On the map, I see that through Willow Drive, it continues to go on, so are we looking at expanding Willow Drive in?
That'll be up for discussion with the plan commission. There's a proposed extension there, however, with the uses that we've proposed, um, we've thrown out the idea of that being an emergency only connection. That's up for, gonna up for future conversation, uh, and leaving, uh, uh, you know, trails access, connecting it primarily.
I thought that was voted a while, did, am I thinking of something else that we voted a long time ago that that would never be connected?
No, that's stubbed.
Wasn't taken off the comprehensive one?
That's stubbed and expected to be connected.
It is. Okay, I thought somewhere along the way we said it would be.
And just for, and there's, it, the questions are great. A lot of this tonight is for, if there is a concept that we don't want to push on, I do encourage all people watching, anybody that's here or any of the trustees on the village board, 90% of what this is for is just so that, what used to happen is something would come up after, it was a plan commission for a month and a half and, or, you know, I should say like six months, and then all of a sudden it got to the village board and people didn't know what was going on. This way everybody has a heads up to be involved in those conversations and come to the meetings. The plan commission meeting is always on the third Monday of the month, uh, same time in this room, seven o'clock. But I mean, I encourage you to come because that's when all those nuts and bolts start to get, uh, figured out. Also, our inspector is there, our engineer is there, and that's where you'll see this really formulate because obviously there is a, uh, you know, certain ordinances that we have that have to be met, uh, and I encourage the public to do the same if, if they would like to.
That's right. This is our initial vision for the property. Uh, this is just starting the process of, well, it'll become public hearings for things like smart growth amendments and zoning amendments and such, but, uh, early feedback is helpful for everybody.
I mean, you said probably a year, you, I know you had said it's, it's going to take a while to get there. I mean, they still, they would have to traffic study, DOT approval, capacity evaluation. There's a long road.
Oh, yeah. This is just to notify everybody that, that they have the idea and that if the village board was absolutely like, we're not, we don't want, we don't want that to stay the way it is forever. It also helps them save money, but that we would be able to say, okay, you don't even need to go to plan commission because we're never going to go for it. But if it's something we think we might entertain, the right thing is to send it to that appropriate body.
Thanks for the data. Thank you for the information.
So, everybody good with them going to plan commission?
Yeah.
Or at least entertaining the idea?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did consideration. Do you, are you just considering going to plan commission or just?
If, if the board would like to take a vote to send them to plan commission, we can. It's not absolutely necessary, but we can as a, as a board do it. If someone makes a motion.
I'll make a motion to send the, this narrative and write-up for this area for the east of Lake Country Lutheran Development to go to plan commission.
I second. It's been moved and seconded to entertain the idea of this concept plan and send it to the plan commission, which would be the next step. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next item that we have is a consideration of, uh, the banner policy. Obviously this is the banner that is over the street, uh, near Sitco, which would be the intersection of Capitol and Maple. Near that intersection. Everybody saw the hometown banner was the one that was up there.
Like I said, not much has been changed with it, just, uh, eventually we're going to have to figure out some direction of organizations, times, sizes, dimensions. I think the banner we had was very well received. There was talk about wanting to make it possibly three feet long or four feet long.
I think, why?
Longer.
Yes.
Well, it's, we'll kind of, if we, whoever wants the full, that's one thing that I had, I had said, it was a thought, so I guess to get it started and that we can kind of go around the horn here, I thought that, uh, the width is fine for re, keep in mind the width, I'm talking as wide as the road. I would like to see four feet added. The reason I say is when you are coming to it, when you're coming from downtown, going out of town, I don't notice it as much when you're coming in from out of town. It just perceptually, I mean, we have the space there, the wire is there, uh, but it just looks almost like it's like, it's like, oh, it could have been a little bigger, you know, it's, it looks smaller. And I do believe that the three feet would be, uh, just fine. Um, and I think that that space will allow anytime there's going to be more on that side, like when we saw hometown celebration and it just had the dates, maybe there would be able to be more stuff and stuff, you know, things like that. I, I think we can afford the space, but that's only me looking at it.
What's the max height we can do?
Well, inside, inside of the...
I mean, I know it can't go much lower because of trucks in it, but I mean, with the pole going.
If you, right now with it being the two feet, that wire is at 18 feet, so that puts you at 16 feet above the road. Okay? So if you went one more, you still have 15 feet. Your average motor home, um, your typically, normal semi-tractor trailers, uh, will make it under four, or make it under 14 feet. Okay, so, I mean, 15 feet is getting closer to that. If you had an extra large load coming through, if you had a, uh, I don't know if it was ever measured, but if you had a dump truck that was fully extended driving through, there is a chance that they would be higher than a 14-foot, um, height. I don't know what the exact height is on that, uh, but that would, you know.
Why would a dump truck go through all the way open?
Uh, they're dropping salt.
They said our guys don't do it that way though.
Typically, I haven't seen that in much in Heartland.
The reason, the reason we have it where we have it, as far as the top, there's hooks directly across from it, so it was a convenient location. That's kind of the one that we energies recommended that they're fine with. As far as going down, we're just looking for, we don't want to have a two-foot banner, three-foot banner, because they're going to kind of create a rope, have it every time that, I mean, you saw the one rope we already had kind of over time started on.
And that's, I just want to nail down, I'm hoping that we can nail down the size.
How high is that fire truck?
Uh, under 12. It's going to have under 12 to get to the fire station.
The bridge in North Lake, when you go under it, I believe is 14'4". 15 feet is pretty high.
Yeah.[1749.75]
Most, like I say, most motor homes, buses.
Using on freeways, I suppose, it's probably acceptable.
Yep.
What's your thought, Dave?
My thought is if you're going to go an extra foot, go to three feet, you should go to twenty-two, just because of tie-off ropes?
Yep.
If your trucks turn in a corner, that lowers that rope.
Okay, yep.
Can you go longer than twenty-two?
You can do whatever you want.
You can.
Keep it under thirty-five.
Yeah.
What about, what about height? Do you think three or four is four?
I wouldn't go any higher than three.
Okay.
It needs to be three.
In their proportion.
I think three is, three, I'm good with three because it puts us at that fifteen, I wouldn't want to personally go anything more than fifteen or lower. I mean, you need that fifteen feet of space.
I just think, you know, we have a lot of distance this way that we have some playroom to go even longer.
No, we can, and that's what Mr. Felkner is alluding to. You want it wider so that those ropes that are angling don't.
What did you say, twenty feet?
Three.
Three feet high.
I said twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
That doesn't matter, because once they get everything hooked up, it's just sliding it over. That was really easy. It's just getting it centered. Twenty-five would be perfect, because then they would just be five on each side from the pole.
Oh.
Yeah, we do that then, twenty-five by three.
Okay. That would at least we got that hammered down.
It's just more cost, but I would-
Is everybody, is anybody, are people okay with that?
Larger?
No, that, well, we're going to start, what's happening is we're going to start-
I'll create a policy.
Getting this thing created, so we're at twenty-five feet by three feet.
The one that's, the one that we had up was twenty by two?
Twenty by two.
Yep.
And don't worry about the grommets, like, I'll come back with verbiage of whatever Public Works wants for this banner material, these grommets.
We need to get the basics done and move on and get it approved.
Right, right.
Pretty much it's size and organizations.
Right. I want to do, I think if we list every single, and each person can chime in, so if someone wants the floor before or after me, I suppose I'm talking, I'm not shutting up, but, which maybe I should, does anybody else want the floor first? If we list every single organization that could ever put a banner up there, this is going to get really difficult, and that book of who gets to put a banner up is going to be really thick. It's going to be thicker than a phone book, because technically anybody could come in and do it. But I'd like to come up, as part of the policy, I think that what would be more appropriate are certain things that we know for certain. For instance, I've talked with DPW and, and people involved with DPW, they don't want, they do have other things they need to be doing. So they don't want to be putting banners up all the time. So, we're almost at a point that it's going to be, it's sounding, seven banners a month, or seven banners a year, we're almost going to come up with seven time slots, so that they're not putting banners up all the time. I don't know if that sounds realistic to you, but that's one thing that DPW said. Furthermore, I will add, just for cost, and I want you guys to be cognizant of this because it blew me away, but when you run the numbers, it's like, holy cow, it is approximately just the cost of it, if you include wear and tear on our vehicles and the time of having the, the amount of personnel it takes to have them off and doing this sign instead of doing something else, is, no joke, six hundred dollars. That's our lea pay, including the insurance that those guys are getting paid and the benefits that we afford them, and the vehicles that are there running.
Is that put up and take down or?
Put up, that's, that was, that was to put up and take down, but that's literally, that is literally our village cost.
No, I knew it was going to be high.
That is our.
Okay.
We don't have any of that in the budget currently, do we?
It just takes away from other things they do.
It just takes away from their budget. So, we have a, we know the size, I just wanted people to be cognizant of that cost. So, what I, what I, well, does anybody else want the floor?
I, I think that's-
I know, we also have trustee Lutke included, a lot of, you know, a lot of stuff that was in what could be something that goes into our policy. I'm just trying to throw everything on the table. I really wanted to get, make sure that that cost was out there. I want people to kind of chew on this, and then I'm hoping that maybe we can really, now that we have the size decided and we know the cost, that it's, it is realistic. I mean, six hundred is what it costs the village taxpayers, which I think is going to knock out a lot of the, you know, the candy shop club that would maybe want to come and have a banner up. It's going to knock all of those organizations out, because we can't just afford to have anybody want to do that. But maybe in two weeks, we come back to the Village Board and we can all be kind of ready to go. As a baseline skeleton, the only thing I can suggest right now, we can keep on changing this as time goes on, but having it up to, leaving it up to the village and forming a committee or something of that nature to decide on which ones would go up, you know, we can do those things.
I think what Robin had there notes, it should be a municipal purpose, and that should take precedent, and I don't want to open us up to a number of different groups, because if you go to, you're different religion, then everybody's got, who gets that holiday? And, you know, the school's got to, you know, that's okay, but I think we really got to limit it, municipal purposes, I like that, Rob, it was good, and, you know, we got to take that precedent and, and put that in there. I, I think that, I'd rather limit it to make it special, like you're saying, seven times a year, but you've got to remember, the winner, we're not going to put anything up. I don't want those guys up on a ladder. I mean, maybe the firemen, but.
I was going to say, you're probably going to have people that want to put up for the holiday train and-
Holiday train, yes.
Right.
But I mean, I think if we make it limited, make it special.
That's village.
No, I'm, you're saying winner, I'm saying that is a winter event.
I, I thought that was, that was good. I, I like the limiting it initially.
So you say municipal, does that mean limiting to bid in village?
Village.
Just village?
So hometown celebration and the train?
Okay. That's two. So, we'll kind of think on that. Do you think, do you guys think that's a good idea to chew on it for a little bit? Chew on it for two weeks and then come back with, you know, what we think.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So the six hundred, is that per person, or that's just for everybody's?
Grand total.
It's the total, so if we did it seven times?
Twenty-one.
Well, if we did it seven, we had seven time slots for a year.
Yeah, forty-two hundred.
Forty-two hundred dollars right there just to put up banners.
Yep.
So I just want us to be mindful of that.
Not to mention, that's work that's not getting done.
Right, yeah, so.
Right, that's why I just want us to-
Yep.
Be a little mindful of that as well.
Right, right.
Has there any thought for, I mean, I know it's for village stuff, but whatever municipality do they throw in some of the cost to put it up?
Well, once, if it was outside of the village, there's no way, I mean, we can't, you got to recoup that.
Well, Arrowhead we would make an exception for.
Well, Arrowhead's not an art.
I know, but, well, that's what I think we have to make a decision on, right?
Right, that's what I want people to think about for, you know, two weeks.
And then we're going to finalize this?
We don't have to.
Okay.
This is up to us as a board. I think that taking little chunks, we're finding out just how much goes into it. I think that if we sat here and just hashed out the banner policy tonight, honestly, we probably would be here in two hours. And I really mean that, it just takes a while, because we'd take, and there's other things we hear about, but it gives us time to go to our constituents and say, hey, what do you like? I love that we went with the idea of getting a banner up there to say, what do we think? Because if we had made the policy without doing that, we'd all be like, man, it should have been bigger. Now the policy's set and we got to redo it, so by taking the little chunks, all of a sudden, we have it set for, you know, years to go.
Well, like I said, the cost is, is a big variance to how many you want to do, how much time you want to deprive DPW of doing other things.
We did get a, we got a, we got a call from the chamber.
Get things done.
I got a call from the chamber, they wanted to put one up for the, their-
Street dance.
Dance party, street dance. And then I also got an email for Heartland Neighborhood Night Out, I got an email about somebody wanting to put up for the sidewalk sale, you know, and then once I say, I just mentioned that there could be a cost, or, I mean, whatever you guys decided to, what groups, what organizations, because like you, it's a, you know, a lot of the church festivals, the Palmer's Tent Event, beer stuff.
That's what I was going to say, I mean, I've already-
You guys will have to excuse me for a second, you can keep talking, I've been trying to make it, but I got a call, ask for a recess.
Do you want another water?
No. Thank you, you can keep on talking.
We think about it?
No, well, you killed it. I, I apologize.
We still in here?
Yeah. Well, we are in recess.
Okay. So that's it.
My apologies to the board, to anyone watching, and to our people in attendance. If it's okay with you guys, we'll go back into session. I appreciate your leniency. So we are back in session, talking about banner policy.
So you want us to just put our final thoughts of who we think should be before? I mean, what are you asking for, two weeks? You said in two weeks, we should come to the final.
Oh, oh, no, we don't have to, and we don't have to come to a final. I think that we, I think there's going to be a lot of talk of what goes up there, like with, the DPW is saying, you know, six or seven a year, that'd be very helpful to them. We have to think about, do we just put them up? Or does, you know, the organizations that those, those costs may be incurred from, do we charge for that? Do we get just our cost? Or do we get additional, you know, what do we, all those types of little things? I mean, it's, we can decide whatever, I just thought that that might take some time. But I don't know.
Well, we're just starting this up, and I think we, you know, with the size wise, it's real critical, we got a size, and, you know, how many we want, and, you know, we all got ideas, I mean, it's going to, going to go, I think we just have to keep living and breathing and get through this first year. But I want to make it special.
Right.
I read, it's like the police week, you know, where we have a week where Police Department or Fire Department, you know, or something like that, and, you know, different things of, you know, that are bringing the community together, like you're saying, bringing people into our community.
Right.
And, but I think, we have to keep talking about this, because things are going to come up, you know.
And events are going to change and evolve and grow and-
I, I agree. I think things will evolve, but I think that, I mean, it'd be, I think it's really nice that it would be, you know, events that happen in Heartland.
Right, well, definitely.
You know what I mean? Like, I mean, other organizations may want something, but I mean, we only have, I'm not going to say a handful, but we have probably, what, a dozen events that are really things that really draw people to Heartland. We have our hometown celebration, there's the street dance, there's-
Holiday train.
Holiday train, you know, the tree lady, things of that nature that go on, maybe trick-or-treat, I mean, we'll all kind of decide, yeah. But those are the kind of things I want us to think about, and where do we want that to be at? I'm just trying to guide us, or help guide us there and take the time and get in there. I think we took some great steps, like I said, by taking the time to put that banner up. All of us were like, you know, and we all came up with it together, I think we do better together, and I think we're doing good. I'd love it if it was just already done, because the street dance is in two weeks.
The hard part is, you'll have to let us know truly what you, I mean, municipal purposes, I just thought, you know, the pig does their, their carnival day, the, you have Palmer's Tent Events, now fast-
Right.
What truly, all those bring people here, so what exactly do we want?
Right, and that's what I think we really need to think about, and make the focus more, what brings people to Heartland, so when they come through.
However, again, we do have what, the street dance coming up very soon.
No, I know, that's what I just said, it's-
And have, have they, it's too late now.
It, I, I had told them that we still weren't there, that the, the board was going to see how this one went and then continue to talk about it. Because those banners, I mean, like I said, we now have a three hundred and fifty dollar banner that doesn't meet the height and length requirements, you know what I mean?
Right.
It was the test banner, but they're two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty bucks, and now with even longer and taller, my guess is it's probably a little bit more, and then whatever we decide for a cost, you know, if it's a thousand bucks by the time somebody's done paying for the banner and having it hung, maybe this isn't a big issue.
Can you go back and, we can't have, say it has to be between twenty by two and three and twenty-five, because, but why did you say?
Well, the guys are-
Because it wears?
Public Works is going to have everything roped off, they already have everything pre-cut. You can, but it's, now you're having more people sit there, believe it or not, I mean, there was time, Jeff saw us and was laughing, saying it was six inches off. Everyone trying to look at it to make sure you had the measurements right, yeah.
Just makes it easier, roping it up.
Especially if we get something that's twenty-five feet long, the next time we have a banner, those guys can, I don't know, I'm sure they can mark it so they know here's where the two clips go and we're done.
Because the chamber has the old one they used to put above the street. Okay.
With the dancing bacon?
Sure does. Mm-hmm. With the dancing bacon? Yeah.
So.
I'll update a lot of the, I will update a lot of the verbiage of what kind of grommets and banner and height, and we can get to what organization.
You're going to incorporate that?
I will. I will talk to Judy Welch, who we did our first sign through and just-
I don't know if anybody is opposed to this, because of the running the actual real cost, so there's no question it's the real cost. Mr. Felkner is in attendance, if you do end up wanting to come up and say something, you could. I am tempted to at least reach out, not only to save you guys on the work that you do, but to see if maybe possibly, if we end up getting a bid of two hundred bucks, if it was subcontracted out by a company that comes and does that, where all they need is for a, DPW to have one person show up there just so that they have the lights going or something like that, is that something that maybe we would want to look into?
You'd probably want to create a, like a list of approved vendors or something like that, that would be willing to do it, that do have insurance.
Right.
To make sure that it meets our insurance requirements and everything associated with it.
Exactly.
And we're going to see, when we, if we do this and take these baby steps, we're going to see the problems. We're going to, need to see what has to be corrected and where we really want it, and I think we're going the right way. I just wish there's some way we get that street dance one up, I know it's late, but.
I don't know if-
If I wanted to, if I could say one that I think should be up for this year yet, would be, if we would get the holiday train, we have no idea if it's coming yet, but if we get wind that it is coming, I definitely think that should be up.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, that's, that's a big, that's about as big as hometown, if not bigger.
I would say it takes about, about a week, two week and a half to get the banner, so at this point for the street dance, it'd really get them three days to, one day.
Okay, good.
All right, so maybe we'll be almost, hopefully we'll be almost there in two weeks.
That's fine.
Awesome.
And obviously, we can always adjust this on the fly, too.
Yeah, and once, even once it's set, I guess I just want everybody to know, it is up to the board, this is a board thing, we're all elected and to represent the people. This is something I have a feeling is going to change continually. For all we know, there's going to be some huge event that happens in Heartland five years from now that we haven't had yet, there's going to be this huge bike race where twenty-three thousand people come into Heartland. We're going to change and we'll be putting something up for that. We are, I mean, it's living and breathing, it's government, it's always changing and things happening, so it's not like just because we decided, forever, this is set in stone, but. So, with that, I guess basically, well, we're just going to bring that up again at the next meeting, we don't even need a table or postpone.
Nope.
The next item we have on the agenda is discussion and consideration of next step in the search for village administrator. We had companies that came forward with proposals, we've talked some as a board, I don't know if anybody's kind of come to any conclusions of what they want to do, but at some point, we're going to want to do something. at some point, we're going to want to do something. Anybody have any thoughts, or anybody want to maybe hold this off, um, for any reason to, uh, ask more questions, be it around the village or looking into the proposals that we have to see what direction we want to go?
Did we get any more references, or was that?
Um, a couple on here.
Yeah, that's just-
Yeah, it looks like-
Yep.
We don't have to make it right now.
Can it cost though, right?
Maybe they're looking at the costs as the next step.
Yeah, right. And now that we're deciding and it doesn't affect, um, it no longer affects negotiation, that would be an item that we can talk about now. We did, excuse me, for the public's knowledge, we were in closed session because we didn't want to affect anything that would, you know, screw up a bid coming in or anything like that, but now the rest of this will be added. Open session. You want to, you want to hit them?
Costs and- I don't have them in front of me. I know we emailed them out.
I know you did, they did email.
Do you want them?
You, you can-
Anyone can say them.
I want to say one was around 17,000, the other one I thought was like 11 to 12. It depends as you, both of them, I, kind of what I got from everybody is you can get into international searches, you can add as much money you want.
Customize.
Yeah, that's what I was seeing.
So, I mean, at this point, I think you would, I understand the money, but I would think you would go with whatever company, if that's the direction what company you felt most comfortable with, and negotiate with them on what we can all get for-
Which was the company that we had, we've used?
Uh, PAA, Public Administration Associates. We had, um, that was-
There was the two gentlemen here.
Mr. Burner and-
I've talked to a couple of people in other, in other communities, and I've had some positive things on them. You know, some comments that, you know, but it's, that's just a tough thing. You know, it's like, somebody's got to go out and find a body and throw it up here, and we got to, you know, we got to find like it, so. I, I don't want to spend a lot of time on, I think we should just go with, get somebody. If it doesn't work out, we'll get somebody else. I mean, it's like-
Well, you know what you got to do.
Okay, I'm making a motion that we take the Public Administration Associates as our head, our-
Move forward with discussing them for village administrator?
Yes, let's move forward on that.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded to use, uh, PAA. What is the exact name?
Public Administration Associates.
Public Administration Associates, uh, for the village, uh, discussion, or for the search for village administrator. Discussion. I like their presentation.
I did, too.
I trust it. Um, I did, I think that both companies will serve the village well. I do like, uh, after finding out, I had already been leaning towards them, um, but after finding out that the, the price was lower, I liked that, too. I do think this is one of those situations is you have to really look though. You can't decide something just based on price. I did like them. They seemed professional. I feel like we're going to get a good candidate out of them. I feel like they know the industry. They know what's going on. Um, I personally feel very comfortable, I would feel very comfortable utilizing them, not even just for administrator, but down the road if other positions popped up.
I agree.
I felt that the proposal for GOV HR was much more extensive and had more information in it, as well as had more comparable sized municipalities, um, where they were doing searches for city managers and administrators, um, to our size, especially when we're in Lockshack County. So, I personally felt that GOV HR presented a better proposal than on paper and in person. Um, especially because there's Lisbon right here as well, with information from Lisbon.
Anybody else have any other, anything new, what?
Well, like I said, I liked them both. Um, I was leaning more towards, uh, was it again? PAA.
Okay.
I, like I said, I, they did have some more extensive things, but the cost was in there, so I, looking at some of the numbers, I guess I didn't really be able to substantiate the added cost for that. The only downside was a question that, since they got the bid in late, punctuality, I guess. That was, that was my only thing, but, um, I think if we do choose to go with them, that could be kind of a stipulation that we have some concerns on, you know, that, that hopefully that's not a trend in the process of finding us an administrator.
Right. Any other, uh, any other things people want to throw in here?
Take a bullet.
Well, with that, we will, yeah, we'll call a question. So, all in favor of using PAA, uh, for the administrator search? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
That motion carries. You have them. Okay. Uh, we will reach out to them for next steps.
Yep. I'll be in contact with them. I will shoot them.
And you'll keep the board posted-
I will.
On everything along the way, please.
I will, uh, reach out to the other two as well.
Announcements?
I have one thing I'd like to throw out. Um, over the years, we've done different things and, I mean, different, different organizations, and I'd like just to consider our, our start time for meetings, uh, rather than seven o'clock, start at six o'clock. I know a lot of the times before we start at seven o'clock simply because of the TV, when it could be out there. Now, we're on YouTube, we're out there, but, uh, you know, a meeting starting at six o'clock, I know with, with all the commitments I have, it's easier, easier to make that than that extra seven o'clock, and it'd be nice to, sometimes eat before nine o'clock, have supper. But I just thought it might be easier to, I don't know if it were, if everybody else could make it to start our meetings at six o'clock, just to consider it.
I think that's a good idea.
Thinking about the staff sticking around.
We can look into it. Does our cable TV guy have any issues with that?
I would personally be opposed to that with my own 40 hours. Well, he can, I'm flying in from all over the state sometimes to make sure I'm here by 6:30, so.
Well, it doesn't mean we'll do it.
Yeah, I mean, definitely willing to discuss it.
Yeah, it'd be tough for me since pharmacy closes at six, so I'm the only one there, so.
We'll give you 15 minutes.
I mean, I can do 6:30, but it makes it easier.
I'll look into what we need to do and-
I have to check with my boss.
Any, any other announcements? Anybody else?
She may not let you.
Chief, chief!
First of all, good evening, everyone. I would like to share a little bit about the fire that we had over the weekend at Max Meyer's Heartland Inn. Chief Torn reminded me that, and thanks to your great guidance and foresight from what we've been able to do in the past and staffing and so on and so forth, we had police and fire units on scene in 47 seconds? 46, 47 seconds, um, which is absolutely amazing to me, and were able to do their size up and call in the equipment and things that they needed. I definitely believe that that had a lot to do with the effect of the fire department's ability to stop and control it. It was difficult. As many of you witnessed firsthand, a lot of void spaces, but I cannot commit, uh, tell you how proud I am of, it's like a proud Papa moment, the seat of fire department operating so smoothly and so successfully, and I'd like to take my hat off to them and then also this community. I got to spend a couple of hours with Mrs. Myers on Sunday morning, and the number of people that stopped and brought food and drink and refreshments and clothing and blankets, and it was continuous stream. And that says an awful lot about our community and our citizens, and I'll tell you what, hats off, God bless each and every one of you that took the time to come down and, and thank the people that were there and even throughout the night, and to show that love and concern to a long-time standing business was phenomenal. Very proud of that. Very proud to live in this community. Uh, wanted to just give a shout out for the street dance that's coming up. Um, I think the chamber, the things that the chamber does is absolutely unbelievable. Um, they're amazing, and they're a great, great organization. I would like to support the armored car as well because it's also a rescue. I don't know, and I had to walk in late from another meeting. It also, as the world is getting crazier, it's our EMTs and firefighters and people of the public that may be laying there dying that we can't get at. So, it's definitely, uh, on board with that. Just wondering if maybe we could put a ladder on the top of that, that we could kill two birds with, with one stone, but, uh, the, don't forget, mark your calendar for September 7th. I know it's a long ways off, but that will be our village potluck picnic, Battle of the Badges softball game at Haha Softball Park. Uh, we've got the park reserved. I have yet to talk to some of the Haha people to see if they'll open up for us. But that September 7th will be our community fun day instead of the Brewer game this year. Uh, we're going, we'll have more information out. Everybody, all families are welcome. We'll have bags. We can do kickball, softball. I mean, and we'll just kind of see who needs that armored car after that, I guess, um, after we do the Battle of the Badges. And then also, this evening, I came from a Town of Merton board meeting prior, just prior to this, and I wanted to apologize to the board. We've been meeting, as you've seen in my weekly updates, um, about a year and a half, maybe two years, and, uh, within the last week, on a very short amount of time, things have kind of heated up and boiled up where we had to, to, um, they called a meeting this evening to discuss the future of the Town of Merton Emergency Services and what direction they would like to go. So, I had to attend that and give them some information, and of course, always looking out for the best interest of Heartland and our commitments. But I would like to get on a future agenda item in the very near future, for two weeks from now, to bring everybody up to speed on it and, and let you all know what exactly is happening and what we're looking at and different opportunities to continue to share services and manpower. Not necessarily a consolidation, but I want to make sure that, you know, Heartland stays its entity, and we're very proud of what we have. But we want to continue to share manpower, equipment, and, uh, things of that nature, so. If you hear anything out there, I was at the Town of Merton board meeting tonight, and we discussed a few of that stuff, just as a ideas, a roundtable type discussion. No formal action or anything was taken, but, uh, it's been, it's been, I'm having a hard time keeping up with everything, but I'll get there, I promise. It's just been a whirlwind and the holiday weekend and things, and it, like I said, it kind of boiled to it quickly, but looking forward to dancing the night away at the street dance and, uh,
Be a good time.
It'll be a great time, so. Somebody can walk, um, I can walk, I'll, I live close by.
Thanks for all you do, chief.
Thanks, chief.
Thanks, chief.
Keep it short for you guys. I just want to say thank you to the board and as well as the administration for allowing me the opportunity to go to the Harvard Kennedy School. Awesome, once-in-a-lifetime experience. Learned a lot of great things, a lot of great connections, great networking out there. It was a, literally a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. It's good to be home, um, but it was a, a great opportunity for me, so thank you all for that, allowing me that opportunity to go and attend that school.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Hope you had a good time.
Learned a lot.
You only get one chance, or Dave.
I'm sorry, I, uh, water department reminded me that, that, you know, that was a joint effort in, on Saturday evening. Um, I made a call to Dave immediately and said, hey, just so you know, and he immediately monitored the wells and the pump systems and to make sure that we had plenty of water. So, hats off to the water department as well.
Who wants a truck, no?
It's just a joint, just, you know, it's just such a joint community thing that everybody works so hard together.
I, they do, the DPW, just, I was down there today, um, taking them some leftover snacks for my mother's birthday party, and they got a call about a downed tree that across the street on, it was a prospect, and within 90 seconds or maybe two minutes, they were gone. They were done. They were out doing it, so they are doing just a great job, phenomenal.
Thank you for everything you guys do. Please pass that on to the guys down there tomorrow. Any other announcements? I'll undertake a motion.
I'd make a motion that we adjourn.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn tonight's meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.